Hi, everyone. We're back from our executive session. I do want to make a quick announcement that President Wright is not here because she is attending to some business out of town, so therefore I'm running the meeting tonight. And the next thing on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda or to discuss the consent agenda?
I motion to consider the consent agenda.
Second, any discussion? I would just like to make one statement that I'd like to thank our staff who've signed up to work the Tiger camp. Obviously, we can't do that without staff willing to do it, and I greatly appreciate staff members who are willing to work during their summer. So I just wanted to do a special thank you for that.
I had a question about the summer staff.
Oh, go ahead.
Taylor Evans, summer program paraprofessional. Is that the same Taylor Evans?
Is that our Taylor Evans?
Congratulations. I saw your name earlier today, and I was like, it's got to be the same one, right? That's fabulous. Excellent. And then, Mr. Gainer, did you want to say anything about the financial reports since this is the financial, the five-year forecast that we send to Columbus?
It is, yes. Thank you. So just to note that, you know, we are statutory, statutorily obligated to send this five-year forecast to the state. The timing is not great. I don't know why they choose May's forecast because there's still a lot of uncertainty with the, with the state biennial budget, but also with how we're going to, you know, wind up the fiscal year. So this could change dramatically if, for example, we get to keep the new inputs to the Fair School Funding Plan and they continue to phase that over in over the next biennium. That would be amazing and would have a significant upswing here, but I don't see any downside or, you know, it, nothing, nothing that will cause this forecast to go negative in any way. So if you do look at the five-year forecast, you would have noted that we have a positive cash balance through 2027, which I think is, has been the goal all along of the board and, and, you know, even without the Fair School Funding Plan being implemented, we still are on track to, to keep it there. So that's a good thing. And it's, it's a combination of a lot of things, you know, through supplanting some of the early ESER money, through, you know, increased interest income and some collection of property taxes that were unanticipated, but also just trying to keep the budget contained as much as we possibly can and, and making sure that those supports and things that we're putting in place for students are being paid for through ESER.
So just to be clear, the five, five-year forecast does not include the current discussions in Columbus about the second part of the Fair School Funding Plan?
That's correct.
We, you have to work under the assumption that we're staying flat because it hasn't been passed yet?
Absolutely.
Okay. If it is passed, and if it includes 2022 data moving forward as opposed to the old data points, then we would presumably have a rosier picture, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And so as soon as we know the results of the biennial budget, well, of course, the board always approves the forecast on a monthly basis anyway. So we'll have, hopefully in July, then, a five-year forecast that will at least show us where we stand relative to the new biennial budget.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, I think, I mean, the, the net, the net-net for the community is trying to survive with as few levies as possible. And in March 2023, the fiscal year '27 number was essentially, you know, minus, you know, $200,000 a loss. And after you've done everything, we're now up to about 5.5 million, which is trending certainly in the right direction. And what's even more impressive is when you look at the difference of what we get from the state, you know, I can't do the quick math, but I, I will tell you it's about a $12 million hit roughly between fiscal '21 and fiscal '22. I mean, a $12 million annual loss, just looking at the foundation program. I mean, I know there's other things, and I know money's been moved around, but, you know, I feel like we're in good shape no matter what, but we'd be in better shape if our community doesn't have to pass another school levy, we don't have to ask for one. So, you know, I want to see the Fair School Funding Plan passed.
Continue to advocate for it.
We all do.
Absolutely. But, I mean, there's, you know, we've basically said we want to hold on to this, we want to, you know, no new levy in five years, and I think, and I can't say we're going to exceed that because stuff happens, but we're looking pretty good right now.
Well, we also have to keep in mind that historically, when, you know, when they give us, they take us away. And so, you know, we have a, the shell game that will be happening and the horse trading that will be happening in the days and weeks leading up to the approval of the biennial budget, which is due at the end of June, but last time didn't actually happen by its legal drop dead date. I think it went about two weeks into July, if I recall. And then, so they passed a law, they passed the budget, most important piece of legislation in the state of Ohio, and there were no models until, I think it was November, am I right, Scott?
Correct.
That, so, so they passed the budget in, in July late, and they wouldn't even firmly commit to how much it was funding each individual school district until November, six months later. And so, you know, we, we certainly should continue to lobby on behalf of the legislature fulfilling their constitutional mandate of a thorough, of funding a thorough and efficient education for every child, you know? But, you know, we won't be really, it is likely that we won't know for quite a few months, and I don't trust them a bit. But we all know that.
Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Then, Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes. There is one other item that we need to vote on, and that is under personnel, and it is an approval of an employee separation agreement. It's in the hands of board only. Do I have a motion to consider the approval of the employee separation agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the work session topic equity, and I am going to turn it over to our superintendent.
And I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Gould, to lead us through the evening.
And if I can just remind all the presenters to please speak into the mics, so you're going to have to share it, so it gets picked up on the table. So just pass them along. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Superintendent Kirby. Good evening, guests. This evening, we are here to provide an update on the equity work that has taken place in Cleveland Heights University Heights. I have several members here tonight that will share their ideals and perspectives that have happened as we've dwelled into our equity work. We always start our presentations sharing our mission for our district, and we, as we think about this educational approach, we truly want to make sure that we prepare all of our students to become responsible citizens and succeed in college and career as we think about the work that we'll share on this evening. Our presenters tonight include two principals. We call them Patrick 1.0 and 2.0. That's Patrick McNichols from Garrity, Patrick Carpenter from Noble Elementary. We have an instructional coach from Garrity, Carleen Said. We have Ms. Angela Hong. She's a second-grade teacher. Later, after them, we'll have Mr. Stephen Walker, our TASSL coordinator, and a student, Anaya Item from Heights High. She's an 11th grade student there. You'll be hearing from her as well. Our goals for our presentation tonight is truly to understand the equity core ideas. In 2016, we know that the board adopted equity policy, but we want to look at those core ideas that are coming from the equity policy and talk about the impact on the strategic plan goals. We want to help the staff to understand and explore and apply equity in their schools and classrooms, and providing students with opportunities to advocate and become equity champions while we're collaborating with our families to support equity in the schools and community. These are our goals for this evening and our presentation. As we begin to look at the work of the district and equity, as I shared that we have been looking at equity for quite some time in CHUH, and one thing we wanted to make sure that people are very clear about is that the definition for the principle of equity. This comes from the glossary of educational reform, and it is truly embedded in the educational equity policy that we have here in our district. And the principle of equity is one of fair rather than equal. It is a treatment to help students achieve proficiency in outlined learning standards, excel in content areas where they display interest and potential, and receive comparable opportunities to their peers without having to diminish or disguise some aspect of their personal identity or cultural background. You will hear this evening a lot in regards to how this has come alive and what we talk about in standards and interventions and enrichments, as well as opportunities for As we look at the six core ideas of the equity policy, I want to reiterate some of the ideas that came from the equity policy that you'll hear come alive in this evening's presentation. As we think about Goal Area 1, this is where we are looking at the equitable access to high-quality, culturally relevant instruction, curriculum, support, facilities, and other educational resources. When we look at Goal Area B, this is where there is work that is achieved by our teachers, administrators, and other staff, and equitable distribution of staff across schools, looking at really our structures in place, and this falls a lot under our strategic goal area number four. This is also to look at the provision of curriculum materials as well as instructional supplies, making sure that everyone has access to all materials and supplies. And Goal, in Core Area C, this is multiple pathways of success, providing students with multiple pathways in order for them to actively encourage, support, and look at high academic achievement for students in all groups, from all groups, making sure that we really have access in that tier-one, universal tier. In Core Area D, the district, this is where we're looking at an analysis tool, looking at how we will look at our programs, our policies, professional development to ensure that equity is applicable for, for all of our policies, programs, and procedures. And Core Area D, the staff and the students have the opportunity to really take a look at and understand how the equity work impacts their own identity on themselves and others, and you'll hear, hear some of those testimonials this evening. And in Core Area F, it is where the district is looking at to welcome and empower students and families, including our underrepresented families of color that may not be seen, or make sure that they are part of the decision-making process, as well as to include other partners in this work. And we'll talk about the partnership that we have with another, a partnership that we have. This partnerships could include governmental agencies, nonprofit organizations, business, and the community in general in order to meet our educational needs. So those are the core ideas that we will talk about and make sure that they are embedded in our work this evening. The district has engaged in a partnership with Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity. They are out of Wisconsin, and it is led by Dr. Elise Futura. Dr. Elise Futura had worked with the district prior to our equity policy when we were looking at universal design for learning, as well as the beginning stages of our equity work. In the work that we are doing with them, we have entered into a three-year partnership with Integrated Comprehensive Systems, and we normally refer to them as ICS. So when we say ICS, we're referring to them. The work that we're looking to do falls under these four overarching areas. Cornerstone 1, which is where the district is engaged currently, is the focus on equity. Cornerstone 2 is aligning staff, students and staff. Cornerstone 3 is to transform teaching and learning. And cornerstone 4 is to leverage policy and funding. When we look at these cornerstones and they are presented to our staff, there are several things that we ask staff to think about, and we create norms. Those norms are, in the equity work, you will experience some discomfort. We ask that they stay engaged. We ask that they speak their truth, and we expect and accept non-closure. We also tell them that this is a no-blame, shame judgment. The equity work for us is lifelong, never-ending, at the individual or organizational level, and the collective equity capacity, we are in this with you, mutual learning, challenging, and growing together. As we look at the work that happens with ICS and share, we are currently in cornerstone 1. Cornerstone 1 is focused on equity, and it contains six modules. This school year, we have completed three modules, and in June, we will be working on Module 4. The first module is to look at the history of marginalization, to talk about where we are in the educational system and things that have, have looked at the marginalization of equity in our school systems for over 400 years. We then move to Module 2, which looks at shifting from deficit-to-asset-based thinking, language, and practices, the language that we use and how it impacts our thinking and our practices in our schools. And Module 3 is to engage in identity development, where do we see ourselves and our personal identity? Module 4 will look at how we will apply the equity research. Module 5 is to develop equity non-negotiables, and Module 6 is to conduct an equity audit. As we move into cornerstone 2, you'll see that it outlines an area for us to look at how we align staff and students. This gets into the non-negotiable equity things, where we start to look at our structures and our systems and how we co-serve and support students in our classroom. In cornerstone 3, we look at transforming teaching and learning. We are really ahead of this cornerstone because we have already started to look at this as we're doing our curriculum adoptions. Cornerstone 4 is where we start to look at leveraging policy and funding as we think about the structures and system and how we're transforming teaching and learning. We start to look at our policies and procedures that help to facilitate and support all of the work that has been embedded in the four cornerstones. Here is the Equity Professional District timeline, what you have in front of you. In November of 2021 is where we entered the partnership with Dr. Stacy Scott, as well as Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity. There was a board retreat where Dr. Stacy Scott worked with the board around some equity initiatives and worked with the cabinet as well from November 21st to March 22. We then held a three-day Equity Institute. All BLT members were invited, along with their principal and Equity Task Force members. In this Equity three-day institute, all of the modules were reviewed with the teams to prepare them to be able to actually facilitate this process with their staffs. We were now looking at taking an overarching cornerstone and taking it all the way to the classroom level. This occurred in June. For members who did not participate in June, another Equity Institute was held in September for those BLT members that were not able to attend. Throughout our school year, in our professional development days from October 22nd to March 23rd, Equity Modules 1 and 3 were provided to our staffs by our BLT team, team members. And the reason that you will see a box that is in blue is because that has not occurred as of yet. So anything in gold and black has occurred, and anything in blue has not occurred. In April of 2023, there was a parent webinar. However, we will be holding our BLT training in June of 2023, and we will be preparing our BLT staff members to share Equity Module Number 4, which they will share with the staff in August of 2023.
Hey, Dr. Gould, can I have a, ask a question, or are you going to wait till the end? So when you say Equity Modules 1 through 3, all school staff, and it was presented in your professional development days, is this like required, or is this just something that staff can choose to attend or not attend?
All staff have been, this has been part of what they deliver every PD day. So there's about a half a day that has been designated for just the Equity Modules.
Okay. And so, you know, we onboard people all the time, so, you know, what happens if someone has missed, they're on Module 4, they haven't done Modules 1 through 3? I mean, what's, what's the plan in getting those people up to speed?
So what we did for those people who had not had the opportunity to participate, we actually, Lisa and I actually facilitated those modules during our day-long professional development day. So we did them, modules in the morning and modules in the afternoon. We repeated the sessions.
Okay, that's good.
That's great.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
So in September of 2023, we will hold our parent academy, and we are in partnership with them to share some parent modules around equity, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, as well as we will also have another three-day institute. Because of the work that we are doing around our curriculum adoption, we have moved this Equity Institute to September, as opposed to doing it in June, to provide staff that opportunity to engage in the curriculum materials and then come back in September and then work through the Equity Institute and the modules that are needed to move forward. From October to November, Modules 5 and 6 will be shared with staff. And January of 2024, we will enter into that cornerstone 2, where we talk about the aligning of staff and students, and that's Module 7. And then we will, from February 2024 to June 2024, we will have parent academy webinars, as well as our, we'll go back to our BLT training date. So this gives us an opportunity to have reflection, as well as reassess and see where we are in the process, as well as work with the BLT teams in order for them to deliver the modules. So they are never delivering the modules without having something upfront before they share with the staff, as well as coaching sessions happen with them as well. So as we begin to think about our core ideas and our district next steps, as we've talked about, we wanted the core ideas to truly impact the work that we're doing around the strategic goal areas. And when we think about our strategic goal areas, they are truly built on these foundation equity principles. These principles including, include build, and when we think about build, we want to talk about replacing institutional inequities and innovative supports. Examples of this in our strategic plan works include our tutoring processes, our mentors that we have, our trusted adults, our what is needed, or we call it win, and our advisory periods. When we talk about challenge, we want to think about ensuring that all students are held to high expectations. Examples of this include our multi-tiered systems of support work, the KPIs that we have for the district and for the schools. When we think about collaborative, we want to understand that equity is a journey that requires collaborative commitments, as well as it's a journey that requires collaborative commit, commitments. When we think about this, we're thinking about how we utilize our leadership teams in order to engage all of our staff in being prepared for the equity work. When we think about frame, we want to foster a culture that encourages self-reflection and new perspective. and new perspectives. And examples of this are, after each module, staff are asked to share what made them pause and what makes them resonate. So we have that. As well as in our BLT retreats, staff have the opportunity to also be reflective of about what has happened over the year. When we think about empathize, we want to implement culturally sustaining teaching practices. In our district, our work has been very focused on explicit instruction, as well as updating all of our curriculum materials. Or you know, right now, you just approved the ELA adoption, and we will be moving into the math adoption. And we definitely want to make sure that we are listening continually to solicit feedback from our impacted stakeholders, and through this, again, we reflect after each of the modules, as well as the surveys that take place. As we move next, you'll hear from two of our district leaders, our two principals, our instructional coach, and our classroom teacher. They will share information about professional development of the Equity Modules, and how has it impacted their school and work. They will also share information that outlines how the six Equity Core Ideas are coming alive in their work. And so now, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gould and the board, for the opportunity to share a little bit about our equity work at the school level. As Dr. Gould mentioned, this really is a journey. It's an exciting journey. It's an impactful journey. To be quite honest, it's an uncomfortable journey. And I think the opportunity this year to empower our building leadership teams to lead and champion this work at the building level, has allowed us to create connections. And as the Garrity team will kind of share, personalize that story, which is allowing, I think, our classroom teachers, our paraprofessionals, our office staff who are in attendance at these module trainings, to connect with the work as well, in ways that is very meaningful and is very applicable to what they might do the next day in their position and role in the district. So it's exciting, because there is that educational focus, but it's so much more than that. And being able to hear our leaders share their stories empowers us as a full Cleveland Heights University Heights staff to do this work and to push it forward. This year has been really eye-opening through the equity work, but it's also been mind-opening and heart-opening. We've done a lot of work to review our own internal structures, and I have an artifact that I'll just ask that we can pass around and you can take a look at, that really reviews at the school level, the systems that are in place. So during Module one, our history of marginalization, each school was tasked in small groups to create a graphic organizer that spoke to what systems we had in place that support all students, and then what systems we have in place that support some students. So we kind of just made large webs, and we identified all those wonderful services that are available in the district, and who they touch. You'll notice that on these webs, there are pluses and minuses, because we were then tasked with going deeper to say, which of these services are proactive, serving all, and then which of these services are reactive, serving some. We kind of spoke proactively with the teams to say, the pluses and minuses don't mean positive and negative, but they help frame our work where we want to create equitable systems for everyone. We want to make sure all of our students can access the amazing services that are available at our school level. So to all the amazing staff members that provide related services, provide intervention support. We're looking forward to diving deeper with them to see how we can touch more students in the future. And all this work has taken place through this cornerstone one, of this focus on equity, which really is about like our identity reflections and development. Dr. Gould mentioned that each of our modules end with a moment where staff members share what resonated with them, what they're excited about, what kind of stirred within them, and what might have made them pause, what might have kind of been a rub or been uncomfortable. And so I just captured a few of our thoughts at Noble that I wanted to share. Through these first three modules, a common theme is that assimilation is not the goal. We are not trying to move towards a norm. We want to celebrate our differences. We want to lift up all the ways our students can succeed and achieve, and what they bring to the table at the forefront. This has been thought-provoking work, and it's allowing us to make more connections with our families, and it's really making us as staff members mindful, not only of the way we interact with our families and our students, but the way we interact with each other. Words matter. Words kind of convey our thoughts. And so that asset versus deficit-based thinking is something that we're always combating, and we're always trying to continually strive to focus on the assets and always highlight the assets. And to be quite honest with you, some of those pauses are things that, as building leaders and as the building leadership team, it gives us feedback of how we can drive this work further. One of the pauses, as we started this work, is that some of our practices might unintentionally marginalize students. And so we need to be reflective of what we can control in our building, and then, as Dr. Gould kind of said, as it moves to the district level, to ensure that all of our practices are moving us forward, are moving us towards that equitable goal. So I'll pass it off to Mr. McNiddles to share what's going on at Garrity.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for an opportunity for giving us a chance to talk tonight about the work that we are doing to support our Garrity students and their families. You know, the building-level action plan is the core of the work that we do. That drives our decision-making. And at Garrity, for a couple of years now, we've been having discussions about what equity can look like in action. Because, you know, we've done a lot of talk about equity, and we want to see like, what can it actually look like in the classroom? So that actually was started by my title lead, because he's been heavily involved in his church organization, doing equity work. So even before we had a chance to complete the modules, which had been very impactful with our staff, our building leadership team had already started to work on how we could have more inclusive classrooms. And so earlier, Dr. Gould talked about having win time, which is what I need time, and it's a time in the day where any student can get supports where they're not missing core instruction. So we try to focus a lot of our special education services that require a pull-out to happen during that win time, because we want the kids in the classroom as much as possible. One of the things that we added to our plan this year was to intentionally develop time every week for the intervention specialists, to be able to plan with the general education teacher, what it would look like for them to be in the classroom, providing that IEP support. And what we've really learned is, we need to focus on what small group supports look like, because we want the students working on their goals and objectives, but we don't want to lose sight of the fact that they need to master their grade-level curriculum, because that is the only way that our students with disabilities will ever be able to achieve at the level they need to. For us, it's also about making sure that we're supporting our EL students, because we have a growing population of primarily Hispanic families. So all of our teachers have access to a phone number that if a parent comes in for an impromptu meeting, we can get a translator within a minute or two. You know, making sure that we provide translators for IEP meetings. They are scheduled when we have our parent-teacher conferences. At the beginning of the year, we meet with our parents, and we've hooked them up with the online version of Spanish Infinite Campus, so they can check grades and attendance. And, you know, I don't know if people realize that there is a Spanish-language Infinite Campus. When it comes to our response to intervention program, which, you know, we're transitioning to the multi-tiered systems of support, one of the big things for us is we realize that, you know, we're trying to fix kids in that pull-out time. And what we realized that we needed to change this year is that we needed to get better at differentiation. And so we changed our teacher-based team planning cycles, so that we are looking at data every two weeks that's formative, so that we can design just-in-time interventions to keep kids in the class. And we've seen a significant reduction of students that are needing to get pulled for Tier two and Tier three interventions. The other thing that we've been focused on is changing our language. So after we did the first Equity Module, Mr. Lauschy had made the comment to the staff, he's like, "I'm tired of having these planning meetings where we're looking at interventions and you're telling me what kids can't do." He's like, "I want you to start to tell me, what can this child do, and what do you need them to do?" Because it's a different mindset, like they're coming with an asset. What's the next level of work to help get them back to being on track for their grade level? And to hear it from a staff member, that makes it powerful. So, and then the third thing that we've done a lot of work around this year is family engagement, because we have to have the parents involved. So this year, at the beginning of the year, we did survey as many parents as we could get, because we needed to know, what do you want for your child? Because we do know that there's unconscious bias, and when you hear from a parent, here's what I would like to see for my child, the types of programs that we would like to have them participate in. Having them understand that access to the College Credit Plus classes and AP classes actually starts in elementary school, because if you're not coming out of elementary school at the level you need to, you're not accessing high school credit classes for math when you're in middle school, which means you don't have the time in your schedule to take those college classes and the advanced classes. So we did a lot of surveying to find out what our parents actually want, and then the teachers will talk about how, in January, to connect with the College and Career Readiness Initiatives, we had the students do a STEM capstone around what they want for their future self. So they did research on careers in engineering, science, technology, and they had to find a role model who had developed a career in the field of interest, find out where they went to school, what they had to do to prepare, what types of incomes people in those fields make, because that helps them understand and us understand, like, what do you want to be, and how do we help you get there? And that, that's true equity, because it's not about us giving a one-size-fits-all education to everybody, but really trying to meet your needs. So the teachers are going to talk a little bit more about what that looks like, but the key is that we have done a lot of work to try to personalize our own equity stories. I shared about how my own grandmother had dropped out of high school because she was bullied for being Eastern European, that I don't even know how to pronounce my grandfather's last name, because he changed it to anglicize it. You know, there, over generations, it's possible for people who have been marginalized to come back in, but we know that, that there's a lot of systemic racism that impacts people where they don't have that luxury. And so for our staff to be able to talk about their own experiences, that really made it hit home for all of the teachers about the work that we need to do. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Hong and Ms. Saad, and they're going to talk about their experience.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carleen Saad, and I am the Instructional Coach at Garrity Elementary School, Garrity Professional Development School. I'm also an unofficial member of the Building Leadership Team. So as an instructional coach, I support all of the teachers from preschool to grade five. So when we're thinking about our personalization of equity, that's one of our tenants in our work. And while we're presenting the modules to our staff, we try to make sure that we relate our own perspectives and experiences, so that staff can see themselves in the work. As a member of this community, I grew up in Cleveland Heights, University Heights. I went to every school, from Noble to Cleveland Heights High, and all of my children graduated from here. I think, what am I, a second, second generation, maybe? So I have experience in that aspect. Also, as an educator, as a person of color, as a female, bringing those perspectives and those conversations into our equity work and our presentations really helped to personalize the work. And it also turned, it was a turning point for our staff, because that allowed us to really look closer at our work and how we show up for our students. Through that personalization of work, our staff was able to apply their own connections, and that allowed them to reflect and understand how this looks at different perspectives. When we think about equity and professional learning, and my role as an instructional coach, I'm able to support all teachers in identifying strategies to improve the quality of teacher instruction, and to support the diverse needs of our student population. I partner with teachers daily and weekly through our teacher-based team meetings, our bi-weekly support sessions, through extended coaching cycles, and continued professional development with our teacher clarity and visible learning. Our work that we've done with visible learning has been featured in our latest issue in the headlines on our CHUH website. But this also allowed us to really structure our work, and to provide that high-quality education for all students, and having strategies in place where the teachers feel supported and able to deliver instruction. One way that we were able to address and cultivate the development of asset versus a deficit-based mindset is through our Garrity Goal-getters Initiative. Through this initiative, students in all grade levels were invited to examine what they bring with them as strengths, and identify areas of academic growth. This was actually a student-led initiative. It started out with students that just wanted to hang out in my classroom. And I told them, if they want to come and hang out with me to bring me something, I would like to cover my walls with achievement, so I could take a picture and show it to my mother. And with that said, student after student wanted to think about ways that we can work together to create goals. We talked about academic goals, where they see themselves, what their strengths are, and where they want to be in the future. With these goals, they worked to collaborate with their teachers, peers, and other staff members. They wanted to celebrate their success and personalize it in where they were, which made it so much more powerful. The students were excited to share and celebrate their progress, and by celebrating students' personal growth journeys, and providing a space for them to set their own high expectations, helped to establish a sense of pride and ownership of their learning. So in our purity goal-getters, it's displayed throughout the building, and this was, started off with a couple of students that wanted to hang out with me. Our college and career readiness is another aspect that we think of through an equity lens. Garrity Professional Development is a STEM school, science, technology, engineering, and math. As a STEM school, we partnered with Turner Construction Company, and we piloted the Turner Seeds Program. The focus of the Turner Seeds Program is to increase awareness, inspire, and educate underrepresented communities around STEM. Through our work with the Turner Seeds Project, we worked with engineers, accountants, professionals in that field, and we also were able to invite some STEM professionals and engineers to meet with our fourth and fifth-grade students during National Engineering Week. We focused on Black professionals, people that met the same demographics as our students. The students had so many questions, they could connect. They saw themselves, and they were able to ask questions and see what is possible for them in their future. Our school is also one of the five schools that participated in the Spring Board After-School Reading Program. This program provides high-quality reading programming for struggling readers, with a focus on historically marginalized students in kindergarten through third grade. And my participation in the program, as well as our teachers, we were able to actively provide services to support closing the reading achievement gap for many of our students. We had over 95% participation. 100% of our kids that we invited signed up. We had one of the highest turnout rates for the family workshops, where we engaged parents in identifying strategies, so that they can support their children at home. We even had the opportunity to extend the program after Spring Board, because the kids loved it so much, and the parents got so much out of it. The celebrations were epic, as they ought to be. And the students were proud. They recognized that they set goals, and they worked to achieve them. And it was made evident every day, every day. We have fourth-grade, fifth-grade students who are like, "When can we start Spring Board again?" And I tell them, "I'm sorry, you're too old." But we have that foundation set, and they see what they can- But we have that foundation set, and they see what they can do and set goals. Lastly, I attend, um, our training to support teachers with instruction and curriculum through our curriculum adoption to, uh, address the needs of all students. Teachers will be coached, teachers will have development, and more than coaching, it's a partnership. It's not a, um, one-and-done type of relationship. It's a partnership where we can engage in the work, set goals together, create goals, make changes, modify, all under the, the lens of creating these high-quality learners and students, and giving that, that sense of ownership with our staff and our students.
Good evening. My name is Angela Hong, and I am the Math and Science Teacher in Second Grade at Garrity Professional Development School. Um, so, in regards to the classroom, going alongside with what, um, Patrick 2.0 said, when we are looking at our school-based system, um, we look at all the teachers, every teacher in the building in all subject areas are collaborating with all the intervention specialists and SIT team, which is the Student Assistance Team, to identify classroom supports and inclusion of all students in all subject areas. In regards to curriculum, um, I've spent a lot, extensive amount of work this year, working with Caravandis last year and this year through the Core Collaborative. I've attended sessions that allowed me to learn how to create success criteria that will help my students understand the building blocks to master content standards in both math as well as ELA. I am currently also working with the Math Adoption Curriculum Team, as well as piloting the new, one of the new programs for next year. In the classroom, we're supporting equity learning by having our students participate in capstone projects related to STEM careers. The second capstone project allows students to research careers of their choice, as well as, for our younger students, African-American and female STEM professionals, in which they wrote reports and presentations about their findings. Through our building-level action plan, students are included in intervention session through focus on MTSS. At Garrity, we call this win time, and it happens every day. At, they're designated time for each grade level, and it's called what I need time. Every student is getting support, and all grade levels participate at their designated times. In my math classroom this year, I've been able to take it up a notch and provide enrichment and acceleration using programs like Exact Path and Splash Learn, using data collected from progress monitoring and map math results. This is the first year the second graders have, um, taken part in the math map. So, based on this data, I was able to assist my students with creating individualized goals to enrich and enhance their math development. I sat with each student and had them look at their, analyze their data with me on their reports, and then we set at least two or three goals, that students were able to identify areas they needed to work on or areas they needed for enrichment. And these were all shared with their parents at the last session of the parent-teacher conferences. So, after the math, the last session of math map that we just did, a lot of my students would ask me, "Did I meet my growth target?" So, um, through this work, I'm not only teaching my children to be advocate for themselves for their learning, but also giving them the opportunities to engage in topics of interest to them and helping them understand that they all can learn no matter where they're Thank you.
Do we see this going on in other buildings too? Do we see this going on in other buildings as well?
Yes. We just, we couldn't bring all of them tonight, so.
I get it. I just wanted to make sure that this is just not something that was just happening in one. Thank you.
Well, capstones are STEM. That's, the capstones are a part of the STEM program.
Got to speak in the microphone, sorry.
Sorry, the capstones are a part of the STEM program, but everybody has the win time and the MTSS supports.
Okay. Do you think we're finding kids in all our buildings are making the same statement, that, "Did I meet my goals?" I know it's.
I would hope so.
I'll say, I think so. I know goal-setting has been a focus across the district this year, and now that we are, as Angela mentioned, using MAP, NWA MAP with more of our elementary-age students, that's an avenue that we can certainly, um, have conversations with them about goal-setting that's consistent. So, I definitely think that it is happening, and I look forward to seeing as it continues, kind of where those conversations can go.
Also, I would, uh, just mention that although some of the initiatives that we employ are building-based, I'm, I am the, um, only instructional coach at the elementary level, um, but I also attend, um, our grade-level team meetings district-wide. So, the things that we're doing at Garrity are also shared, um, during those, those meetings, um, during my, during our work with the instructional specialists and, um, curriculum team. We're talking about how we're building equity district, district-wide. So, um, although you may see some unique initiatives at various buildings, it's based on the same fundamental work that we're doing, um, in, in that module training that's available throughout the district.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that struck me, um, was when, um, Mr. McNichols, Patrick 2.0. Oh, I'm sorry.
The original version.
My bad. That, uh, when Patrick mentioned this idea of, um, of looking at elementary school, um, in terms of preparing the students for larger goals later on. And I think that the idea, um, of, um, eligibility to participate in some of the CCP, really amazing CCP stuff that we're doing as early as our middle schools, is a, is a, an important example for that. And as a teacher, I think that I'm, I'm, I think we're, we're beginning to see that, okay, COVID ended, and when we came back together, we knew that we had really giant, I mean, you know, worldwide, giant, universal gaps. Like, kids were just behind. And then, as we've moved forward, it feels like, and, you know, we'll let the educational researchers tell us about it in a few years, but it sort of feels like we are now entering into a phase where it's really individualized gaps, that it's, it's, it's much more like we've addressed some of the, some of the universals. And it may be actually harder moving forward to, because of the differentiation that you spoke of, that's hard work, that's hard, hard teacher work. And it's, it's harder the bigger the classes are, and it's harder the number of the standards there are, and especially when you're starting to talk about kids who are significantly behind in some of the standards, because you're really not even talking about the grade-specific content standards that you're accustomed to. You're really filling gaps that are a little bit further back. I guess but or and. The win time is a potentially powerful tool in the day. And sometimes I think that, um, families sort of can, can, sort of, there's this, this shorthand way of talking about win time as we're teaching to the test. And I think it's worth clarifying that, that that's really not the case, that we, we need to get beyond the shorthand version into the longer-hand version, which is, we're really teaching to the standards. And if we're doing it right, we're teaching it to the standards where the student really is. And not just the third-grade standard if he's, if he or she is in a third-grade class. If, if we need to go back and revisit a second-grade standard, then that's what we're going to do. But I think it is, it is important for us to communicate that this is teaching to the standards, not to the tests, but, but, the tests are built from the standards. And so, we are likely, we hope, to see that, we're, we're likely that our students and their families will see increase in individual student performance on the tests, but the goal is really about the standards, because the, mastering those standards is what opens the doors to the, to the really, really cool coursework later on in a student's career. And I just, I, I love all of what you've said. And I want to really reiterate, what we're talking about is an enormous amount of teacher work, because, you know, I only teach one subject. And in my eighth-grade course, I have 25 standards in that one subject, and in my 10th-grade course, there's, there's around 30. And so, now you start doing the multiplication of 30 standards, 30 kids, whereas each kid, just keeping track of where kids are is, is a, a pretty enormous effort. So, um, you know, thank you for all of this, and my gosh, thank you to the, the teaching staff, because this is a whole lot of work, folks. Bravo.
I know we have other presenters, but I want to go ahead and comment while you guys are up here before we move on. And I have a couple of questions as well, um, and I guess this one is for Dr. Gould. So, the equity modules, are those being added to new employee orientations for when we hire people each year?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And I don't expect an answer now, but if someone could get back to me, I'm just wondering, how many languages are in our district when we consider English as a second language? I mean, I know we have Spanish, and I remember when my son was at Garrity, you know, Hispanic was our fastest-growing population even back then. And I know in Patrick 2.0's building, it's Nepalese, but I'm sure we have other pockets, so I'm just curious how many languages we are dealing with in our district.
I will get back to you on that, because we have several other languages as, as well. Our EL population has declined, uh, in numbers, but our languages have not. So, I, I will get that for you.
Right. And then, my other comment is, I was really glad to hear you talk about kind of this idea of reverse-engineering and having kids think about where they are now and where they want to go, and you're absolutely right. If you're not, you know, taking and, and challenging yourself in younger grades, you're never going to get to a calculus BC class. You know, you don't just go from ninth-grade algebra to that class. And also, it's good to start getting, um, students interested in taking things like Mr. Diligente's robotics class, and you have to have certain mathematics before you can get there. So, I love that, that thought of making sure kids are aware of it and, and their parents too, or their families, so that they're taking the classes that they need to make sure that they end up where they, they want to go. And, um, my last comment is, the Garrity Goal-getters, I think that's really interesting. Just a quick guesstimate, like, how many kids are we talking, 30, 50, five?
How many students are at Garrity?
240 elementary.
About 240. Yeah, it's, it started, my fifth-grade students that would come to visit were my spokespeople. And it all started with a sentence strip crown that I just got had with like a, you know, a paper like this, and I wrote, "I am a goal-getter." Taped it on their head, and. And every, how do you get that? What do you do? Who can I set goals with? How can I accomplish this? And it went from about two fifth-grade students to a school-wide initiative.
That's amazing. And can you give me an example of like, a goal or whatever one of the kids would set?
If you go back to this, I think I want to.
I want to learn how to spell.
Little May, first grade. "I would love to learn how to spell correctly." Spell, S-P-E-L, correctly. Now she comes, "Look, this is how you spell spell and correctly." I need, I want to set another goal, I want to set another goal. And I'm not a classroom teacher. And it, the fact that it started off in a little room with a couple of, of kids, and these goals were made personal, and this is where they are, and they want to have steps to get to that goal, and it, it, it just leaked through, and then it became something that was embedded in the classrooms with their teachers. We had our Garrity lunch bunches, and I couldn't sustain the lunch bunches, because I wasn't able to have lunch. So, you know, I'm, how can you do this with, with your, uh, grown-up-at-home? How can you do with, do this with your teacher? How can you do this with each other and just celebrate? And, um, that even led to our PAWS assemblies. So, during our, um, our PAWS assemblies, we're looking at how students have set goals and met their goals, and also relate their achievements academically, um, to our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Support, and, as well as our academic PAWS, how they're showing up to show their personal best and, um, acting responsibly and showing respect and, and, and working hard and, and safe.
That's excellent, because now you're not only teaching content, but you're teaching life skills.
I just, I love the way that it also just puts the locus of control. It teaches kids that, that they are in control of their learning, that it's not just something that happens to them. And, I mean, I can't tell you how many of my high school students are still not really, they, they don't really own the process. And it's wonderful, the idea that we're, we're able to really get the young ones to buy into it and to just see it. Because that's something, that's a mindset that they'll have forever.
Yeah. It's developing internal motivation. And that is amazing, amazing. It's great. Thank you.
Can I get a little bit of clarification on win? So, the same win philosophy program that's going through the elementaries, uh, that's also been replicated in a little different way in the middle schools?
Yeah.
But win is still.
What I need.
The same, what I need.
And, and, and the middle school is called Rocks in Action, and learners become leaders at Monticello.
Okay. That's great.
So, I'd like to thank, uh, this team, and now we're going to transition to our next team.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It's good to see you all.
As they are transitioning, I will, uh, go on and talk about the Building Leadership Team next steps. The next steps for the Building Leadership, uh, Teams are to review the staff feedback from Equity Modules 1 and 2, uh, and look at implementation and create goals from this for the next school year. Also, uh, in our June retreat, we will look at Module 4, which is to, uh, apply the equity research with our BLT members to prepare them, uh, to deliver this module in August of '23. We'll review data for, uh, the school pertaining to academic behavior and climate to assess it against our district and school KPI targets. Uh, the equity work will definitely will be embedded in the, uh, Building Level Action Plan, and then we'll prepare our district Building Leadership Teams to deliver Cornerstone 2, which moves into aligning staff and students. So, next I have the pleasure of having, uh, Mr. Stephen Walker, our TASSL Coordinator, and Anaya Idem, our 11th grader from Heights High. Mr. Walker will share how we're looking, uh, to promote and expand our opportunities for our students to show multiple ways of success. And Anaya will share how the TASSL program has impacted her own, uh, equity identity or own identity and the work that took place in the TASSL program. So, these will look at core areas, uh, in our equity policy around, uh, goal area C and E, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Walker.
Greetings, everyone. Can, can you hear me? I'm talking loud enough? Okay. Thank you for having me, first and foremost. Thank you, Anaya, for also coming, and I'm proud for coming to this. So, when, when we talk about, uh, TASSL, which is a 21st-century program that we have, this is a new grant, uh, this is our first year. Uh, the previous grant, uh, New Heights, was, was kind of based more towards, uh, the academic component. Uh, this component that, that was created, uh, from Supar D, Megan McMahon, and Bob Swaggart, focuses more on, uh, college and career readiness and, and, and other opportunities outside of just the kind of academic component. So, we've, we've got a number of, of, uh, things we've generated, uh, some ideas we've had to kind of hold off on, just because I think we're, we're all in, big on quality, uh, instead of quantity for, for a second. So, uh, when it comes to, uh, our, our case. So when it comes to our Case Western, I'll just begin with the list right now. Our program, Case Western, we had a partnership with Case Western, where they're big on trying to introduce more of our minority students to the engineering process. So they were willing to host us for seven weeks, every Thursday, and we actually were able to get our kids a stipend out of that. So each student got a $500 stipend, and we did a first session of fourteen students. This session, we did twelve students. So we're creating probably an engineering boot camp that's in the creation process. So we're going to take our students down to Case during the summer months, a bigger, larger number of students to expose them to this experience also. So the TASSL program, we have a number of components with that. The TASSL program is a project-based learning component where students are able to earn credit, more on a hands-on entrepreneurship, business-savvy type of component, instead of just the regular kind of edgenuity piece. We still have a small number of edgenuity students that we're serving. And then we have the documentary, which I didn't throw in there, where we had a documentary series, which it was called Who We Are: A Chronicle of Racism in America. We had thirty-two students that attended a four-week session every Tuesday. And I think it was powerful because the students asked, can we keep continuing to do this? So I love that the students say that they are interested in it because, for me, I think about the engagement, the exposure, and empowerment of our students. So that's something we're going to continue to do on a yearly basis. But the students did jump in and chime in and say, are we able to pick the movie that we're going to watch or the documentary? Which, of course, we said yes. So we have a partnership, and we're written into the grant, a partnership with the City of Cleveland Heights. And Anaya, and myself, and Dr. Towns, most definitely, who was a big part of what we're doing at the school, created the Helping Hands group, which is a student-led group on engaging in community service throughout the community on a yearly basis. Our first project was a spruce-up or kind of like a volunteer cleanup at Kane Park just last week. So we took twenty-five to thirty, I think twenty-seven students down, and we did some, just kind of helped out and kind of spruce up for the upcoming season. But I'm going to jump on that subject because while we're down there with the students, the perception of our students was, for people who kind of coming through the park was, so do you work for the county? Yeah, see? So it kind of excited me to tell them, no, I don't. I'm a staff person at Cleveland Heights High School, and this is a volunteer project, and our students are helping out, so they're not in trouble. So that's what we want to see more of, and the students had a great time doing it, so we're going to continue to do those types of things. As far as the City Hall student internship, we have two students that are at City Hall working with our HR department in the City of Cleveland Heights, paid, who are interested in HR. So they're there working with one of the HR directors for three weeks, three to four weeks, and they're going to be paid. So we're just trying to expand on that. So if there's any questions or other comments that you would like me to expand on, I can. But our goal for the grant was seventy-five students, and we've now served one-hundred-and-seventy students. So we want to double that next year and just create more opportunities for our youth and continue to keep doing what we're doing, which is nothing but positive.
Was the, is the HR internship with the City of Cleveland Heights like a senior project, or is that?
We picked specific seniors because since it was new, I kind of met with the mayor and the mayor's assistant and the students who were interested in HR, and we just wanted to begin with two students, seniors. So it's kind of like a senior project-type deal, yes.
That's great, because that could lead to something after graduation.
Exactly, exactly.
That's good.
How does this align with graduation requirements, not necessarily ours, but states with seals? It seems like there's got to be multiple seals that our kids can earn by doing this.
So we actually have a micro-credential component where we're trying to, there's so many micro-credentials everyone knows, we're trying to kind of ban them down, and we have a survey, a parent and a student survey, on what types of credentials and seals we're going to offer for them. But Bob Swaggart, Dr. Carmen McDaniel, Carmen Daniel are going to kind of solidify which seals we're able to offer, because that's going to be our Thursday component starting next year. So every Thursday is kind of our choice day, so that's the internship, the CO Day, things of that sort.
Carmen's with the CT program?
Exactly.
And she's also doing this kind of work individually with the high school? That's good to know, I didn't know that.
She's also involved in the Heights Schools Foundation in her spare time.
So I know, Liz, you and I have spoken about community service requirements, but it certainly seems like this sort of fits the bill.
I believe it does. And along with our other students who, you know, do need community service on the other end, we've also taken them, I've talked to the foreman at the Cleveland Heights Community Center. So we utilize our youth in that manner. I've actually hired some of those youth to work for us there because, just because you got in a little trouble doesn't mean that you can't be hired and move forward in life. So that's what we're being on.
If you can't get forgiven at home.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Did you have a video there you were going to play? It said, "Play video."
I was so excited for Anaya to talk. So we had our equity, we had our Abbott signing day today, and our students were highlighted. And so they had shared a video with Ms. Kirby and I. And so I just, as we think about our students being Equity Champions, it's a small video, it's only a minute and twenty-seven seconds. So this is just a small portion. See if I can get it. Ah, I may not be able to get it to play. It doesn't have any music. All of the students are in their college gear of where they've been accepted. She received a full ride, eighty thousand dollars. Think you know somebody in that photo.
Oh, just, some kid. Yeah.
We had a couple of brothers that went there a while back.
Yeah, they played football, didn't they?
Yeah, we're going to keep sending football players there.
All righty.
I forgot, I forgot to mention, from the documentary, Anaya and several students wanted to create their own student equity group, and that's what she's going to speak about tonight.
Nice, thank you. I'm glad I asked for that.
And I'll say that our...
Not that I don't want to hear Anaya, I want to hear Anaya too, but...
And our top student, I didn't point him out, Cameron, I've been knowing Cameron since he was in the eighth grade. He is going to Ohio State, I'm sorry, the Ohio State, along with Taylor Evans, and he is carrying a 4.5 GPA.
Wow.
Amazing.
Wow. And if I remember right, he was the top math award student in eighth grade at Monticello.
Yeah, yeah. He was in our all-in Equity Program.
Hi, I don't know if you can hear me well. I'm not, okay. Okay. I'm not going to lie, when I first found out about the program, I was just looking to get an extra credit and whatnot. And the flyer for it, it said that this will stimulate more conversations about these issues, and I just signed up for it because I wanted the credit. And usually when I see these flyers, it's never really like they say it is. So I was like, okay, let me just sign up where I get the credit. And there was an application for it, and I remember on the application, it said, "What are you hoping to get out of this?" And I didn't know, I just wanted the credit. So I got accepted into it, and I went to the screenings, and what I got out of it, I couldn't even imagine asking for. The documentary was really good. I had seen it before, but my view on it throughout the showings of it, it changed completely. The conversations that we had throughout this led me to understand that I'm not the only one thinking these ideas. There's other students who go to the same school as me who think these same ideas as me, that these problems also happen right in our school. Usually when teachers hear about things, it's like, it has to be big. For students, we see these things every day, and then for the board to see these things, it has to be really big. But for students, we kind of see these things every, every day on a day-to-day basis, and I got to really see that other students think the same thing through these conversations. And through this, we got to talking a lot about how we kind of need a group to really push these ideas forward. In the documentary, there was a clip that showed that in most of these huge movements within America, like the civil rights movement, we'll be like, we'll go up a hill, and we'll be at the top of the hill, but then something will happen, such as Martin Luther King being assassinated, and we kind of roll back down the hill. I feel as if that also happens within our own school district and within our own school, where we come together as a student body, and we have the same ideas, but we kind of back away from it almost. And I feel as if we kind of needed a group to keep the ball rolling and not go the other way, but go that way, you know? So we came up with an equity group that would help fuel these ideas that we have and will push them forward. Yeah.
So the creation of the Equity Group, she's a rising senior, so we have five other students that couldn't attend tonight, but the goal is for us to continue with the group. So we didn't want just all eleventh graders or twelfth graders, because again, they'll be gone. So we're going to meet before the end of the year and recruit ninth, tenth, eleventh to make sure that this continues on and come up with kind of a rubric of attendance, whether it's meeting twice a month, et cetera, and what type of projects and goals we want to, not we, they want to come up with to move forward and keep it rolling. But the interest from the students is what excited us, and Dr. Heather Hill was kind of our moderator for the docu-series, and she's created some surveys, some other items that we're going to present to the students, that they're able to pass down, that we can kind of go back and forth on to make sure that this is a success. And like she said, it's not something we just talked about and then it just disappears. We don't want that, so.
Yeah, I was fortunate enough to attend two, I think, of the sessions of the documentary. And listening to the students' conversations afterwards, the thoughts that the film provoked and how they were able to connect these historic ideas to their present-day lives was amazing. I was really blown away by that. And so I'm happy to hear that the students are going to create a group and create their own agenda, basically, of what you want to do and why.
Yeah, I kind of wanted to build on that. So equity isn't all just about race. I mean, it is for the most part, but there's also other things. And I feel like having these conversations, I got to see that it's even some of the teachers who are branching the disconnect in equity almost. Hearing from some students that there's a teacher who has a no-Durax policy, that policy is only going to affect one kind of student. And then there's other teachers who have had homophobic attributes or things that have come out of their mouth that make the classroom uncomfortable for other students. And it's sometimes the teachers who make these situations uncomfortable, but we haven't had the right, well, we do have the right students, but we haven't had the motivation to really actually push these things to change. And I feel like this group could really help with things of that sort in that matter.
It's a place to discuss it and to figure out how to make it better. I think it's terrific.
This is great.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Gould, appreciate you.
So in our last segment, thank you so much for the participants for this evening. And our last segment is to look at family engagement. Here we have our educational equity policy goal around family engagement. You've just heard Anaya and Mr. Walker talk about the innovative opportunities that we've included here. Malia did have the opportunity to participate in that, and she is correct. The conversation that came out of the students and them applying what they heard from the film was just very eye-opening. Even some of the scenarios that they shared that were happening in and out of school, even on some of their jobs, was very powerful, and I'm glad to hear that they wanted to continue to do that work. We want to continue to build our Equity Champions as we continue to partner with our different agencies. We also have our Family Engagement Equity Strategies, where we have a Heights Family Handbook, and all of these resources can be found under the Family Engagement site on our website. Our Heights Family Academy is set for fall, September sixteenth. We will also continue to partner with ICS in this process. The person who is also partnering with us with our modules will be working with us to really look at what we call some ally opportunities. There will be some webinars that will happen this summer, and then there will be a culminating piece that will happen at the Heights Family Academy. These ally conversations are designed to truly build community, share information and opportunities and resources and support our students to be successful. Some of the Heights Family Academy webinars, we've had the Transition Series, where we looked at amplifying voices of students and parents, and we've had some key presenters from our parents and our students. Elementary to Middle School Transition, and Dr. Towns at the high school just completed the Middle to High School Transition, one for families. And some of our next steps, we are looking for the continuation of family webinars. We want to look at College and Career, the resource edition, so we can talk about our college and career readiness piece. There's a book study or poetry piece that Dr. Hannah Reed is looking at for high school literature. And as I shared before with ICS, we'll continue to host those ally academies. And as I shared, June, July, and August, those webinars will take place, and then will culminate in September. So as you can see, our core ideas are truly supporting the work that is happening throughout our strategic plan process. You've had the opportunity to hear how equity has happened at the district level, has played into the school, all the way down to the classroom and to the student, and the next steps of working with our families and communities. And if you have any additional questions, I will take those at this time.
Well, I'm curious about KPIs, and you've mentioned them maybe twice in the presentation. And I know this district is, in the spirit of being more accountable, you know, setting your own key performance measures and indicators and so forth. The next time around, I would like to see some of those in this presentation, just how you're measuring yourself, with the understanding that, I know some of these are stabs in the dark. I mean, when you come up initially with, okay, well, this is what we think the measure should be. And sometimes when you go through the work, you also realize, oh, we never thought about that, we really should be measuring this instead. But I think that's important. I mean, this is really the first time we have seen, I actually went back to Liz's evaluation and looked at the equity piece and her evaluation, which is sort of how we measure the district. It's not necessarily what Liz does and what Liz doesn't do, but I mean, you move from Kerwin to this new, well, you evolved from Kerwin to this, to this new process. You know, one of the questions I know as a board we're going to ask Liz is, well, is it worth it? Is it working out? You know, how do you feel about it? But sometimes without measurements, it's hard. I think it's too early to look at a measurement now, but I think the expectation in future presentations is to see some of those measurements and actually see how they actually wick into the actual real strategic plan that we've got and how that... And, and how that, and how that fits in. But I'm thrilled with this work. I mean, you know, having students and teachers and admins come to us and show us firsthand, I mean, that's not only feel-good stuff, but it's good to see, and it's good for the community to see this. So thank you for all this.
You're welcome. Yes. And when we talk about KPIs, that is the work that they will be doing at their June retreat. So you are more than happy to even come and sit with us the seventh, eighth, and ninth at the ESC?
I just have a couple of comments and questions. Um, and at some point, I'd just like to see the numbers of how many views we're getting on the Heights Family Academy webinars. I know they've been up for a while, so I'd like to see that. And I'd just like to say that I'm really glad to see that we're deepening the equity work. I mean, when this first started, and at least when I first got on the board, you know, it was, it seemed like we talked a lot about a lot of trainings at PDs that were opt-in, not, you know, or then it was like, some of them were starting to be required. But seeing now that we've broadened it to, you know, it's all staff, it's every position in the district, and that we're moving into, you know, families and PTA and students, and I think that's great. So thank you for, you know, continuing to build on the work. And we're not doing what Anaya said, you know, where it happens and then it kinda dips and disappears. I'm glad to see that, you know, we're, we're continuing to push and move this work forward. So thank you to everyone who presented tonight for the work that you're doing. It's good stuff. I've only been able to dip in and out on a sporadic schedule this past year. So this has been very useful, because now I can see the larger context. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Malia serves on our Equity Task Force, when I'm able.
Any other comments?
I just wanna thank Dr. Gold, um, all the principals here this evening, teachers here this evening, student, um, staff, parents as well. Um, it's always good to hear the work happening on the ground, um, and what that feels like. And it's not easy as well. So I really appreciate you guys for your leadership and your bravery in the work. Um, and I think we're learning really great lessons this year. I really appreciate Dr. Gold pushing us on the ICS framework and really making sure it's integrated and really permeates, uh, professional development and learning in our district. I think it ties directly to some of the other things we're working on, both on the academic side, certainly, but also on the social-emotional learning side. So we talked about that when we did the climate work session. That equity is embedded, you know, in that work as well. We'll continue to do that work, and so I'm glad that these things are kinda happening in tandem. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if nobody else has any other comments or questions, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned.